Regular meeting number 32 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem.
(Music)
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 Let us pray. Eternal and merciful God, those here present join with the members upon the city council in prayer, as they meet this evening to conduct the business of our city. So many needs come their way that it is often difficult for them to adequately address the concerns of all those who seek their assistance. While we pray tonight with the members of city council, we also pray for the victims of gun violence in our city and in our nation, which indicates and illustrates how far we are from recognizing each other's human dignity and right to a peaceful and productive life. While we deplore the deaths of the innocent, we also pray for those who have perpetrated this violence on our fellow citizens. May they come to regret the harm they have done and instead work toward the development and flourishing of their fellow citizens, not their destruction. Most of all, Lord, we pray for peace in our city, peace in our families and communities, and peace within our hearts, that we may serve you and one another with love and generosity, and grow in what it means to be united in our common humanity, your gift to us. Amen.
(Audio) Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journals? So move. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Any other communications to be read into the rec?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Are there any resolutions or announcements from members of council? Councilmember Craig.
Thank you, President Ginther. This Saturday, June the 14th, at the Dodge Community Center, or the Far East Community Center, from 8:30 a.m. to 9 o'clock a.m. will be the Walk with a Doc. Take steps to a healthier you with Walk with a Doc. Every other Saturday, Recreation and Parks will host an hour-long morning walk, led by Mount Carmel Health System Physician. Walkers can come and walk as long, as little or as long as they'd like, and all can enjoy coffee, water, a healthy snack, and walking incentives at each walk. Also, I need to remind our listening and our listening audience that Columbus Recreation and Parks Summer Activities has begun, and we still have a few vacancies at selected sites, and you may call 645-3319. Again, you can contact the Recreation and Parks Department at 645-3319. Mr. Brandon, any comments regarding that? Anything you want to share regarding our summer program?
No, sir. Thank you. You said it.
Well, thank you very much for being here tonight. I want everybody to encourage their children to partake. There are some fabulous, exciting activities taking place in our city, and we're extremely excited about it. So, thank you very much for the comments.
Councilmember Klein, President Pro Tem Miller, Councilmember Mills, Councilmember Paley.
Yes, thank you. Council President Ginther, tonight I have Resolution 0103X-2014 to declare June 2014 to be Immigrant Heritage Month in Columbus. I would like to invite Melissa Huffman, Patricia Lombetta, and Damaris Medina to the podium, and their other guests, to accept Resolution 0103X-2014. First, I move for adoption.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Generations of immigrants from every corner of the globe have helped build our country's economy and create the unique character of our nation. Immigrants continue to grow businesses, create American jobs, not only here in Columbus, but across the state. For generations, immigrants have contributed to the richness of diverse cultures and custom, not only to the city of Columbus, but to our nation. Immigrants have been tireless leaders, not only in securing their own rights and access to equal opportunities, but also in helping create a fair and more just society for all Americans. It is important that we recognize and celebrate the many contributions that immigrants from all over the world have made to our community and our country. Ms. Huffman and your guests, would you like to introduce your guests, and then the floor is yours?
Thank you, Councilwoman Paley, President Ginther, members of council. Thank you so much this evening for passing this resolution, and on behalf of the Welcome.us organization and the guests here, I just have a quick note from the executive director. On behalf of the entire Welcome.us team, I want to thank you for issuing this resolution declaring June as Immigrant Heritage Month. Your commitment to creating awareness and helping us celebrate this monumental month will be instrumental in the success. At Welcome.us, we are dedicated to celebrating a United States that is fueled by immigrants from around the world. Our goal is to encourage every American to tell the story of how they first felt welcome to the American experience. Our history and our stories will help determine our future at Welcome.us, and we want everyone here to be a part of that history. Today, with the issue of this resolution, you have helped advance the cause forward. We thank you for your commitment to helping us tell the story of how our shared heritage has made America so great. We invite you to stay up to date on everything going on with Immigrant Heritage Month on our website, www.Welcome.us. Now, I'd like to turn it over to our friend.
Thank you, Councilwoman Paley and councilmembers, for recognizing the month of June as Immigrant Heritage Month. It is no secret that, as laborers, immigrants have helped to build infrastructure in our society through the railroad and farming industry, while working hard to provide opportunities for their children, volume in education, and contributing to the diversity of our neighborhoods and community. I moved to Columbus at the age of five and attended Columbus City Schools, a graduate from Aaron Franklin High School. I am currently working for the county as an investigator for the Public Defender's Office, holding a Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice Administration and a Master of Science in Organizational Leadership. I am currently pursuing a doctorate in Business Administration. For the past 30 years of living in Columbus, I have seen an increase of immigrants migrate to our city, open businesses, be responsible residents that contribute to our economic development. Thank you once again for recognizing that immigrants are a vital component of Columbus' growing economy.
Buenas tardes a todos. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Councilwoman Paley, President of the City Council, City Councilmembers. My name is Patricia Lombetta. I'm an immigrant from Ecuador. I moved to Columbus 10 years ago with my husband. I'm a small business owner working with the community. I'm here today to thank you for recognizing the month of June, the Immigrant Heritage Month. From my experience working with Latino immigrants, I would like to share with you that they work so hard to provide for their children. They also work so hard being outstanding residents. Like me, many of them own and operate businesses. We do our best to learn English and learn the rules and guidelines to live in the United States. Also, we teach our children the value of a united family, and reminding them that the end of the day, it's all about loving God and trust in treating others the way that we would like to be treated. Finally, I would like to share a quote with you from President John F. Kennedy. Every aspect of the American economy has profited from the contributions of immigrants. Gracias.
If the rest of you could at least just introduce yourself, so that we all know who you are, and then I will take comments from other councilmembers.
Omar DiAngelo from Argentina.
Adriana Fonseca from Argentina.
Alexandra Alexandra from Belarus.
Nancy Paeon from Korea and Abigail Bogart.
Burhan Ahmed from Somalia.
Mazen Alisa from Iraq, Baghdad.
Are there any comments or questions from other councilmembers? Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, Councilwoman Paley, for recognizing the month of June and as the Immigrant Heritage Month. Certainly, Columbus is a place that is smart and open and values everyone, and so just want to say congratulations to you for having this resolution, and for each of you who've come down today, that this city certainly is so happy that you're here. We're a greater city because of you. Thank you for your contributions to the city, and I wish you the very best as you continue to move forward in your endeavors. And I want to say a special hello to one of our church members from First Church, who's on the dance ministry, and just want to say thank you for coming down and wish you well as you move forward to getting your doctorate. Thanks so much for being here and your contributions to our city.
I'm going to give you the declaration, but I also want to mention that I have the proclamation from the mayor's office also, so I'll give you both of them. Just have one other comment. Council President Ginther, I just wanted to mention, what a great job I thought that the GCAC did with the Arts Festival this weekend. It was bigger and better than it's ever been, and it certainly shows that art does matter to our economy. I went around it quite a few times and talked to a lot of the local emerging artists, and I can tell you that most of their inventory was sold out before Saturday. So, obviously, this is helping with the economy. I thought GCAC, Tom Katzmeier, and Scott Huntley did an absolutely awesome job, and if you missed it this year, don't miss it next. Thank you. Council President Ginther.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Councilmember Tyson?
Yes, I have one resolution this evening, and I'm going to ask Dr. Teresa Long to walk to the podium, and it is Resolution 100X to urge the Ohio Legislature to pass H.B. Bill 536 to require accepting cases of medical or religious exemption that children enrolled in a state-licensed childcare facility be immunized in accordance with the recommendations of the Advisory Committee on the Immunization Practices of the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. Whereas Columbus is currently home to two major outbreaks, one based at the Ohio State University and another community-based outbreak in Columbus, Franklin County, and Delaware County. And whereas the central Ohio mumps outbreak accounts for over 2/3 of the nation's mumps cases, and whereas the best way to protect individual residents and the community as a whole from mumps is through vaccinations with MMR vaccine, and whereas while no vaccine provides 100% protection, two doses of the mumps vaccine are 88% effective in protecting recipients from the disease. And whereas, in addition to the MMR vaccine, individuals can help by help prevent getting and spreading the mumps and other diseases by frequent hand washing, especially before eating, not sharing cups and utensils, covering sneezes and coughs, frequent cleaning of high-touch surfaces such as doorknobs, and remaining at home when you are sick. Whereas more people are relying on group immunity and opting out of vaccinations, not just for the MMR, but for many other routinely administered childhood vaccines. And whereas Ohio is the only state to not yet have a state law requiring immunization for licensed childcare facilities, despite the fact that most states have had such laws in place since the early 1980s. And whereas, although the state of Ohio has already recognized the importance of certain vaccinations before children enroll in kindergarten, many communicable diseases are preventable through vaccines, can happen before children start school or after they have entered pro-secondary education with people who have avoided vaccinations up to that point, as evidenced by the current central Ohio outbreaks. Now, therefore, be it resolved by this council of the city of Columbus, that this council is hereby urged the Ohio Legislature to pass H.B. 536 to require accepting cases of medical or religious exemption that children enrolled in a state-licensed childcare facility be immunized in accordance with the recommendations of the Advisory Committee for Immunization Practices of the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you, Dr. Long. The floor is yours.
President Ginther, Chair Tyson, members of council, thank you so much for this resolution. Actually, this is a very important consideration. We have thanks, obviously, to Representative Antonio and Smith. They are sponsoring House Bill 536, which, as you mentioned, would require all state-licensed childcare facilities to do what most parents expect a licensed facility to do, which is to require immunizations unless there's a medical or philosophical religious exemption. We are the only state in the Union that does not have this requirement, and it's high time, as you've just shared. We actually now have, just this afternoon, announced 417 cases of measles here in the Columbus-Franklin County and Delaware County outbreak. We are nearing that number. We will probably surpass in the next week or two the number of the entire nation had last year as far as mumps cases. And just to our northeast is measles, which we're very concerned about. We're trying to keep right up there and just deal with mumps. So again, I did testify on behalf of this bill last week. There is lots of support in the House. We hope it will pass from the House to the Senate, but we are also, and will be using this resolution from you, to share with our Franklin County delegation. There are numerous other cosponsors, but as of now, there are no other central Ohio cosponsors of this legislation. So we'll hope that we can encourage them to, either in the House or on the Senate, if it gets there, to, again, be cosponsors. So again, I appreciate your passage of this and support. Again, I would note that we continue to push on. We're actively investigating. I did share with the House Committee last week that we have already spent over $350,000 of our Columbus public health resources in just the investigation of the mumps cases. That's a lot of diverted resource, honestly, but we have to do our job. And I can tell you that there are many parents whose kids are out of school or who are ill. There are also parents or people who are working in the workforce that have had to be left from the workforce while they are isolated, while they have this infection. So indeed, the costs to our community are quite great. So again, these are other reasons beyond the people, and we've had numerous who also have the inflammation of their testicles, their ovaries, and one person who is deaf. But the issues around the sterility that may come for the men and women, these are very serious. So again, we appreciate your support on this matter and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Long, for your advocacy in this issue, and we hope that it will pass in the House and the Senate. Thank you so much.
We hope so, too.
Thank you.
Any comments from our elected officials, city auditor, city attorney? Judge Barrows, anything from the court?
No, thank you, President.
Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? If not, we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is 1223 and 1258-2014. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 1060, 1103, 1104, 1137, 1184-2014. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance 1101-2014. Technology Committee ordinance 1050-2014. Rules and Reference Committee ordinance is 1182 and 1229-2014. Zoning Committee ordinance is 1092, 1228, and 1230-2014.
The following ordinances appear in our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 104X-97X and 99X-2014. Finance Committee ordinance 1108-2014. Workforce Development Committee ordinance 1305-2014. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is 1226, 1243, 1245, 1252-2014. Public Safety and Judiciary Committee ordinance is 1205 and 1246-2014. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 968, 1100, and 1203-2014. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is 1105, 1166, 1188, 1222, 1250, 1261-2014. And Resolution 92X-2014. Technology Committee ordinance 816, 1018, and 1150-2014. Development Committee ordinance is 1199, 1215, 1217, 1218, 1220, 1237, 1282-2014. Administration Committee ordinance 1239-2014. And appointments from the mayor's office numbered 80082, 83, 85, 86, 88, 89, 90-2014.
We have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions. So move. Sarah Second. Clerk call the roll by voice.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes, with the exception of 1250-2014, on which I'm abstaining.
Miller? Mills?
Yes, with the exception of 1305-2014, on which I am abstaining.
Paley? Tyson? President Ginther?
Yes, consent agenda carries. We will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day table in the emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you. The first ordinance they have in Finance is ordinance number 1170, that's 2014, is to authorize the Finance and Management Director to modify and extend a contract on behalf of the Fleet Management Division with Gresham Smith &amp; Partners to authorize expenditure of $154,300 from the Fleet Management Division's bond fund and to declare an emergency. The original contract, which was EL014835, was established pursuant to ordinance 0777-2013. This contract modification represents a second phase of what is expected to be a three-year project. Phase one involved an environmental audit of all the city fuel and generator sites, as well as the development and planning for the implementation of the EMS plan. Phase two, which is what this ordinance is for, involves the following activities: development of an internal communication plan, establishment of document control processes, population of EMS data management system, employee training, the identification of operational controls and emergency preparedness, monitoring and measurement of key performance indicators, and the implementation of environmental management plans, and the identification and key prioritization of necessary capital improvements. The overall EMS program will ensure that the city maintains and complies with the environmental rules and regulations by including comprehensive staff training on the applicable laws. Furthermore, the EMS will allow for the city to better prepare for environmental risk and respond to emergencies if they occur. And the same system utilities has been using for the past three or four years. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Mr. Thomas McClure to walk towards the podium. I have ordinance, the next ordinance is 1197-2014, is to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management to enter into a contract with the Greater Columbus Arts Council for support of the Columbus Film Commission, and to authorize expenditure of $100,000 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. The Greater Columbus Film Commission is a nonprofit organization which is dedicated to promoting the greater Columbus area and central Ohio as a prime filming destination and serve as a central resource hub for the film industry. Mr. McClure, the podium is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther, and councilmembers, and Tyson for sponsoring this legislation. I'm Thomas McClure, the executive director of the Greater Columbus Film Commission, also known as Film Columbus. You just said our mission. We are a nonprofit organization, so we need as much help as possible. Most recently, a $3 million production just filmed in central Ohio. It was called The Tank, and it was produced by Glacier Films, which is owned by Tove and Hayden Christensen. Hayden, you might know him as the actor that played Darth Vader in the last Star Wars trilogy. Before deciding on filming in Columbus and central Ohio, Glacier Films was being courted by other film commissions in other cities and states. And The Tank was to be the first of several films that Glacier Films would produce. Film Columbus played a huge role in securing The Tank to shoot in central Ohio by showcasing the potential our capital city has in sustaining a feature film of this size. Film Columbus also played a major role in assisting The Tank in obtaining crew, talent, locations, and resources, which helped the film run smoothly on the 28-day shoot. When films like The Tank come to Columbus and central Ohio, it positively impacts the economic status of the city. And earlier this year, GCAC, or Greater Columbus Arts Council, sponsored a filming impact study by Bill Lafayette, and it included, or was based on, Columbus hosting two feature films in similar size to The Tank. And here's a quick summary of that impact study. Regional output increases by $6.4 million annually in Columbus and $6.7 million annually statewide. Household and business earnings increased by $3.3 million annually in Columbus and throughout Ohio. A total of 112 full-time and part-time jobs within the region and 116 jobs statewide are created and sustained. It's because of the support of city council and Mayor Coleman that Film Columbus is able to further our mission in promoting Columbus and central Ohio as a prime filming destination. We are able to secure production companies such as Glacier Films to bring their slate of films to shoot in Columbus and central Ohio. Film Columbus is able to compete with other cities for film production, which have a positive impact on the city. So in conclusion, thank you so much, city council, for your support, and Mayor Coleman for his support. We look forward to securing more productions for central Ohio and Columbus.
Thank you. There being no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committees this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Our next committee is the Public Utilities Committee. Councilmember- Councilmember Klein chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Two pieces in utilities tonight, with one piece was a companion piece, nine sixty-eight twenty-fourteen, that was passed on consent, but they all pair together on one purpose. And I'd like to give Deputy Director O'Grady the opportunity to describe how these three work together.
Council President Ginther, Councilmember Klein, all three of these pieces of legislation this evening are for our southerly wastewater treatment plant, and they are all three projects to provide chemically-enhanced primary treatment at that plant, and it's approved project by the EPA. This contract actually will include capturing and the treatment of wet weather sewer overflows and sewer flows in excess of the current plant capacity. We'll be adding an additional one hundred and ten million gallons per day of treatment capacity. Without this treatment, overflows would be sent directly into the Sciota River. Obviously, we want to prevent that from happening. Once complete, anything over three hundred and thirty million gallons a day will still receive primary treatment.
Thank you, Deputy Director. Any questions or comments? The first piece is nine sixty-six twenty-fourteen, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a professional engineering services agreement with Brown and Caldwell Ohio LLC for preliminary design services for the southerly wastewater treatment plant chemically-enhanced primary treatment preliminary treatment project, to transfer within and expend a total of one million, five hundred and eighty-three thousand, seventy-three dollars in funds from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund, the Sanitary Sewer Revenue Bond Fund, the Sanitary Sewer Build America Bond Fund, the Sanitary Super Build America Bond Fund, the Sanitary Super Permanent Improvement Bond Fund, and to amend the twenty-fourteen capital improvements budget to establish sufficient budget authority for the expenditure for the division of sewage and drainage. Any questions or comments? I move for passage. By voice, apologies.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Miller? Mills? Paley? Tyson? President Ginther?
Next is nine sixty-seven twenty-fourteen, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into professional engineering services agreement with Arcadis U.S. Inc. for preliminary design services for the southerly wastewater treatment plant chemically-enhanced primary treatment clarification project, to transfer within and expend one million, eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars in funds from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund, and to amend the twenty-fourteen capital improvements budget to establish sufficient budget authority for the expenditure for the division of sewage and drainage. I move for passage by voice vote.
Craig? Klein?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mills? Paley? Tyson? President Ginther?
That's all I have in utilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Our next committee is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. President Pro Tem Miller chairs the committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight, in the Public Service and Transportation Committee, we have two items, eleven eighty-five twenty-fourteen, to amend the twenty-fourteen capital improvements budget to authorize and direct the city auditor to appropriate and transfer funds, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract with Shelley.